July 11th, 2002, meeting of the East Hampton City Council. Could I have a roll call, please?
Justin Cobb.
President.
Donald Psychowski.
Here.
Salem Derby. Dan Hagan.
President.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Chet Ogalewicz.
President.
Dan Riss.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
President. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
No move.
Second.
Have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of the previous meeting? Any further comment or amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
At this point, what we're going to enter is our public speak time. This is for the members of the public to address the city council on any issue that's currently not on the public hearing. We'd be glad to hear from you. If there's anybody here who would like to address the council in that fashion, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eli Damon and my address is 14 Moore Avenue. And I thought there was going to be a public hearing on the school's issues today.
There is. We are going to talk about that.
We are?
Yes.
Okay, well then, I'm sorry, I will.
You'll be able to comment when that comes up.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak to the city council on items that are not on our public hearing agenda tonight?
Justin, I must step down, I'm supporting him.
Counselor Psychowski is supporting him, please state your name and address for the record.
Nobody recognizes me? The most notorious person in East Hampton? Good evening. Donald Psychowski, 86, former East Hampton citizen of the great community. This is regarding the article in the July 5th issue of the Gazette. The reporter Ms. Everett stated that she called my home where a woman answered and immediately hung up the phone. The woman was my wife Paula, and the following is her statement of clarification. When Ms. Everett called and said who she was, I asked her politely to please stop harassing us, and I said goodbye. I did not immediately hang up the phone as she stated in the article. What I said was omitted from the article. Okay, that takes care of that one. Now, this is me. I'm the target of a recall election, and I've got big shoulders. But common sense dictates that the persons or persons who are calling for the recall should accept the responsibility for the cost since they're the ones who initiated this action. Thank you very much, and I'm going to sit down.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to go forward and speak to us in any manner not currently on the public hearing agenda? Seeing none, Counselor McCoy, communications from elected officials and correspondents?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two communications here. One was from Jessica Allen, city planner. Okay, moving on. We have a next communication from the city of East Hampton Economic Development Industrial Commission, just writing a letter in concern about the effect of the Route 10 West Street Bridge closure on small business. The letter will be obviously available to the city clerk if you'd like to read the whole letter. It is basically requesting that city officials keep the EDIC informed decisions in timeframe for commencement of work so they may be able to notify the businesses in public as well, obviously, in concern to minimize the effect on East Hampton business during that closure. So again, this letter is as public record at the city clerks, and that concludes communications.
Thank you. I'd like to note on the agenda at the end, on a new business, councilors may have received this. Counselor, please. There is a request by me for to amend ordinance 10-8, the keeping of farm animals on residential lots. I want to make sure people understand that that's here and that we'll move back to committee when new business comes up. That said, we have some time. Mayor, communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a little update on that last item. We did get some information from Mass Highway recently. I just had a chance to go through it today. Senator Canap is looking to hopefully schedule some sort of a public event, August, September. Low bidder was Northern Construction. There's some details that I was going to share with you in an email. I'll do it tomorrow, and we'll send it to whoever else, make sure it gets to Jessica and Beth. So there'll be some information forthcoming about the Route 10 project, but probably the details will be in the fall. With regards to the items that are on the agenda under my communications, the first is simply a copy of a letter to Williston North Hampton School thanking them for their $10,000 contribution in support of the library. That contribution historically was $20,000, but they still haven't been able to recover their financials enough to increase that back to 20, but we're certainly gracious for the $10,000 that they provided. Second item, you've seen this, those of you that have been here, this is the report of what our estimated school spending is for fiscal year 2013. I do this for the school committee and obviously for the city council. Twice a year, for each fiscal year, one estimated, and then once the year closes in about 30 days on the actual. So this is what we project. It'll change slightly at the end of the fiscal year, and probably by your next meeting, you'll have a report of the actual spending in fiscal year 12. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me anytime it's convenient for you. Real quickly, we spent about $20.3 million for education in the budget that you approved at your last meeting. And finally, you have a request that is going to be hopefully action for new business or potentially a vote tonight. You may recall that funds were appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to acquire conservation restriction in 22 acres of property off of Paul Street. This is the restriction document that needs to be executed by the city council and myself and others, as you'll see in the document.
I ask that the Chair of Property, Counselor Psychowski, you take this up under new business to move this to committee?
Come on.
Please, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. That said, we'll move on to, for a little bit anyways, reports of standing committees, rules and government relations. Counselor Riss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a small report this evening. We met recently to discuss both the Chapter 32B, Section 3, request from the Personnel Director and to accept Administrative Code Number 12 Library Services Contract. The latter, we did approve three to zero, and I'm here to make a motion to place this for public hearing, that is, the acceptance of Administrative Code Number 12 Library Services Contract at the next meeting at 6:15 in East Chambers.
Second. We have a motion on the table to set the request to accept Administrative Code, the Library Services Contract for a public hearing at the next meeting, which is August 1st. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any injunctions or extensions?
Also, we are going to meet once again on the request to accept Chapter 32B next Tuesday, that is, the 17th, at 6:00 PM in Conference Room 1. The Rules Committee is debating whether or not to basically allow the city to direct health care for all its workers and to remove such negotiation from collective bargaining. This is a very important and difficult discussion. I urge councilors and any residents to attend. That is, next Tuesday, the 17th. We hope to conclude our discussion and report out at the next meeting. Thank you, sir. That concludes.
Counselor Hagan?
Finance, obviously, tonight we have a public hearing for the school committee's request to place an override question on the ballot. We met, the subcommittee met twice, once in joint with the school committee and once alone. We'll get into that, obviously, during the public hearing. There's only two other items on the agenda, so we're not going to have a subcommittee meeting in July, and we'll set one at the August 1st meeting of the city council. These will be for salary and state and review of elected officials and Counselor Psychowski's request to exclude the over age 62 for future override and debt exclusions. And on that item, I'd request a 60-day extension because I think the date is July 31st, so I'll need a 60-day extension.
We have a motion on the table to expend the request to exclude over age 62 from future overrides and debt exclusions. Any further comments on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That concludes.
Include your report? Thank you. Public safety, Counselor McCoy?
No report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Appointments, Counselor Manning?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move the two appointments down to Appointment Subcommittee, the appointment for our city clerk, Barbara La Bombard, and the appointment for our city assessor, Mark DiMaro. In the form of a motion, please.
I have only one comment. I was going to have you do it under new business, but you're ahead of me. I'll accept the motion. That said, are there any comments on the motion to move that to appointments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any injunctions or extensions?
Thank you, Mr. President. We will be holding our meeting on August 1st at 5:45 in these chambers to review the two appointments.
You have three more. You have three more.
Oh, and the rest of the other appointments, yeah. Thank you.
We'll get that later. Okay, that said, ordinance, Counselor Ziegler?
We have a public hearing tonight to amend the city ordinance, Chapter 3, for bicycles. The other two, we had a request from Counselor Cobb to review the special permitting process and the zoning amendment for the temporary signage to Pulaski Park. I would like to continue to the next meeting. And Counselor Psychowski, you had a request. Do you want to address the?
No, that request was in, and we were talking about the stretch code and over 55 housing. We had a very good meeting. We had two builders come in and explain things to us with the problems that they have, the competitiveness that they're running into, the extreme cost, and some of, it's very hard to say, hear what they said about some of the things that they have to do that they sort of just don't agree to because it seems too unreasonable or almost even the other way. I can't, I don't want to use that word here. But, and we continued the meeting, and we're going to further input. Salem is going to look into certain things, and we need some more information before we make our decision, and I don't know how long it's going to take to do this, but we didn't get into the over 55 with the bonus. Because that was a big mudding maker for the town. You know, and the thing of it is, one of the things you have to realize about that over 55 with a bonus, if you think where we had a problem up there on Clark Street, where they were talking about the density of that project, and then all of a sudden we're getting a housing project down there on Parsons Street that's denser than that. So I mean, so there's some justification of bringing that back, too. You know, so I mean, that's going to be a good discussion, and a lot of tax revenue and everything else that came to this town, a lot of new growth and everything else, it would help us out financially. I believe that, I personally believe that we shot ourselves in the foot when we did that. We weren't looking far enough ahead, but that, things had happened, so I want to try to address that problem. Thank you.
Counselor Ziegler, would you like a motion to extend those last two items?
Yes, please. A 60-day motion to extend by 60 days for both the zoning for the signage at Pulaski Park and to rescind the stretch code in over 55 housing.
Second. We have a motion on the table to extend the aforementioned request in front of ordinance. Any further comment on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Property, Counselor Psychowski?
No report this evening. I have something on our new business.
Thank you. Yeah, he'll do it under new business. That said, we're getting close, close enough for me. I'd like a motion to enter the public hearing.
So move.
Second. We have a motion on the table to enter into public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that said, we're going to break up the way it's listed here a little bit, just to accommodate people's schedules. We're actually going to start with item B, and then go to item C, and then last of all, we'll do item A. So I turn this over to Counselor Hagan. Item B, Proposition 2.5, override requested.
As I made a comment in my report on finance, we had two subcommittee meetings relative to this, one held jointly with the school committee and then one held just with the subcommittee members. And many public comments came up, many comments by the school committee, which I'm sure people are going to make those comments tonight, we're going to give everyone an opportunity to do that. There was also some talk of, was the school committee sure that that was the figure that they wanted to bring forward in the ballot question of $1,407,456? So I guess at this time, I'll save my own comments till after the public has a chance to speak. If it's okay with you, Counselor Cobb, and who would you invite?
In that case, we welcome members of the public. Before we begin, I would like to ask, because of the crowd that's here that might want to speak to this issue, our rules generally give the chair discretion, how long someone can talk. I'll be watch my watch for three minutes. If you go over, if it's important, I'll allow you to continue, but I will give you a reminder that we have a lot of other people that do need to or wish to speak up. That said, if there's any member of the public who would like to come forward and speak to council on this issue, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Peter Gunn, I live at 8 Brewster Avenue. I am the Chair of the East Hampton School Committee. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you tonight. We haven't had a chance to speak to the full city council. The school committee unanimously requests that the city council place a budget override question in the amount of $1,407,456 on the November 2012 ballot. This educational investment and recovery plan will enable the East Hampton schools to preserve, restore, and invest resources in the programs and people necessary to provide a quality 21st century education for all of our children. It will build on our current strengths, it will close the current budget gap, and it will enable us to grow essential programs. In turn, this measure will enable us to provide the best practices in education and to be competitive with the school choice and charter schools throughout the Pioneer Valley. We believe that this measure will provide a quality education for our children and that the good people of East Hampton will respond to the opportunity to provide an education better than each of us enjoyed however long ago. It is imperative that we employ scientifically supported educational practices and technology, much as we would with the health care that we provide for our children. We see the entire package as an integrated proposal to help realize our vision as outlined in the strategic plan. Tonight, I ask that you not only vote to put the question before the community, that's a civic opportunity that should be advanced, but that you provide us with your guidance as well. I've been impressed with the diligent attention that members of the finance subcommittee devoted to this proposal. Counselors Hagan, Riss, and Cobb have asked good questions, sought precise information, and gave us a fair hearing. I hope we have persuaded them and that we can persuade all of you to support this measure. Members of the school committee and the superintendent are ready and willing to provide any information and to answer any question that anyone has about this vital initiative. We are confident that the case can be made that this proposal is good for our children and our community. In closing, allow me to paraphrase a bit of wisdom about trees that applies equally to our young children. The best time to invest in education was 20 years ago. The next best time is now. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak to the city council on this issue? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Shelley Bathland, I live at 39 Glendale Street. I'm here tonight with my son and my husband, and I'm here to urge your favorable vote tonight to put an override question on the November ballot. I am in full support of this override simply because the schools have endured lots and lots of cuts, and I say enough is enough. My son is only in second grade, but we've seen his class size grow up to 26. We see his gym period go from just one day a week. It's not enough exercise for a growing boy. Enough is enough. These cuts are a detriment and add to more and more families leaving our town, leaving the school district to make the decision to enter choice schools or charter schools. And not only do our city dollars follow those kids, but the brain power goes as well. We do not have as full of a room tonight as I know we could have if we had those families here in our school district. So as a town and a school district, we lose that brain power. We lose their school sets and experience. And there's much research, I stated research the last time I spoke at a city council meeting, and I'll just paraphrase, that there's much research that shows how student success is directly tied to money spent on schools. With one of the lowest tax rates in Western Mass, I'm ready to sacrifice more money for my meager household budget for the students of East Hampton. Please vote yes.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience who would like to come forward and speak to the city council on this issue? Please just state your name and address. Okay. Looks like we're, one more, we got someone?
I thought she was going to talk.
There you go.
I'm Tina Tudren, I live at 64 Campbell Drive. My son Nicholas is going to be going into his first grade year at Central School, and I will be honest, when I started looking at the schools, I looked at the school choice opportunities, I looked at the charter schools, and when I took the school tour and then ran in the next day to Shelley, who I had known through the East Hampton Family Center, she said some wonderful things about the elementary school. She said, "Give it a try." And you know what? We couldn't be happier with the staff. We couldn't be happier with a lot of the things going on in the school. And one of the things that really saddens me is to hear that we're going to lose a teacher in my son's incoming school grade. I mean, the class sizes are already big. I asked him earlier today what his favorite thing about school was. He's six, so playground. I said, "What's your second favorite thing?" And he said, "Teachers." And I think that we all want things to be, you know, the way it was when we were kids, but guess what? It's not. The teachers need the technology to bring our kids forward. People in other communities have it, and we need to be competitive. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Ingrid Florrie, I live at 45 Briggs Street. I'm the parent of a child with special needs who goes to Maple Street School. He's, he'll be going in first grade, and I'm also a member of the Special Education PAC here in East Hampton. As a sped parent, we see a lot of things that go on administratively and behind the scenes that other parents don't necessarily experience, so I'd like to speak to that a little bit in my experience. Overall, we've had a fantastic experience in East Hampton. The staff has been really competent and enormously dedicated. But I'm concerned about the effect that budget cuts over the past few years have had, and I'm really nervous about how much worse it's going to get if we don't increase funding to the schools. I can see the stress that the recent budget cuts have created. Special education administrators have taken on more responsibilities and are no longer able to regularly communicate with families. Therapists are being contracted out instead of hired as employees, which makes them a lot less accessible to families and to their coworkers. Timelines that are mandated by state law are not always being met, and the administration is sluggish to respond to parent questions and requests. When our Director of Special Education listed to me the number of new responsibilities that she's assumed over the past three years as a result of the ongoing budget cuts, I was astounded, and then not surprised to learn this last week that she's leaving us. If the cuts continue, I'm concerned that we're going to lose additional valuable staff. I know of families who are seeking to send their special education students elsewhere because of the frustration that they've experienced in recent years. Budgets are tight everywhere, but I feel like we have an opportunity to give East Hampton voters the choice of making high-quality schools a priority and making them a priority right beginning now. So I urge you to place the choice before the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak to the city council on this issue? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Maren Goldstein. I live at 3 Golf Street here in East Hampton, and I'm a recent person who's just recently moved here this past winter from Somerville. And I'm moving here with my wife and son, who's going to be entering kindergarten here at Maple School. And, you know, we definitely looked, similar to other people who have spoken, we looked around at other schools, we looked at other neighborhoods to live in, other towns. We chose to move to East Hampton. We were excited to move here, and yet, at the same time as we're hearing about these cuts, we're concerned. And, you know, my understanding about the number of people that choose to leave East Hampton schools costs the schools upwards of $1.4, $1.8 million a year. I believe that's the right numbers. And so if we are looking to ask the voters of East Hampton if we can get an additional $1.4 million of schools into our schools, that's actually going to be likely even more money that we're going to get back into our schools. Because as we improve our schools, we're going to have even more kids and parents choosing to be a part of this program. I want to be one of those parents who chooses to stay here because we have a good school and keeps those kids engaged. I am very positive about everything I've heard about the teachers here, everybody we've met and everything we've heard about here, and why we moved here is because we heard was that the teachers in East Hampton are incredible, they have huge heart, but they don't have a lot of resources. And so what I'm hoping out of this option to be able to vote as a democracy in this town about having this override is going to give these teachers the resources, and then hopefully more people are going to choose to stay in this town and give even more resources back to this town to be able to have a strong education for our future. So what I think right now is really important is that, I appreciate your representation of the people in this town, but I also really think it's really important, this is such a critical issue, that this issue should definitely be brought to the town to vote for whether or not we believe as citizens of this town that we should have this money spent on schools and education and on our future. So I hope that you will pass the vote, the pass for this, for having an election in the fall. Thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to speak to the city council on this issue? Sure, right now you know the drill.
No, I do nothing. Good evening, Peter Marks, still 25 Pelican Drive. I can only second what everybody else said about like the importance of good schools. And I really want to just like for everybody else to put it in perspective, like I said, good schools is not only, it's not only schools. Good schools bring a good community, good schools will improve home values, good schools do so much more than just like bringing a good education, which is our future, but like I said, they do wonderful things for the whole community and for our future. So I really urge you to consider that tonight, and I'm hoping you're going to vote all in favor of this, that we can all go together and then ask the community to make a decision on this and really have the chance to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? And I'm going to ask if there's anybody who would like to speak in opposition, just cover all the bases. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Dr. Tamara Smith, live at 103 Strong Street. I have five children in the East Hampton School District. And when we first moved into town in 2007, we were told in a very abstract way that eventually there'd be a new elementary school coming. My oldest just graduated from elementary school, still no new schools. Over those five years, we saw the student load stay the same, the teacher load go increasingly lower and lower in his school. And this is what we're all facing as a community. We made a choice to move to a town. We're seeing that our school districts are eroding because of budget cuts, and we're at a point where one of our only options is to have the democratic process as voters to determine whether or not we want to change our school district or move out of East Hampton. So I'm appreciative of the opportunity to have that democratic process in place, and I really hope that we do have the opportunity to educate the public as to what we're facing as a town if we do not have the override passed. Thank you.
Welcome. That said, if there's anybody who would like to come up and speak in opposition to this, putting this on the ballot, please do so first. I want to give people an op-
Speaking in favor.
Okay, those who want to speak in opposition first. Is there anybody?
This is extremely difficult. Fran Ru, Hendrick Street. I did not move here, but I did just retire. I am now on social security. I'm speaking for the old folks that are on social security, that a $300 or $400 increase in our taxes is a lot for us to bear. It is my understanding that a general override, once passed, becomes part of the budget. It does not stay where we intended it to go. Therefore, I would strongly suggest that the city council consider a debt exclusion override for five to 10 years, and then it would go for the intended purpose. You could readdress the issue. I'm totally in favor of the idea of supporting the schools. One of the things that concerns me is you passed a budget last meeting, I guess it was, and it contained $6.7 million for one line item. And that is something that has not gone down, it just continues to go up. I remember when it was around $1 million. I remember when it was around a million dollars. That's for employee benefits. That is what is killing the people on social security. We see that, and we think, "Man, I wish I got that cut attention." Yes, put it to a vote, but I suggest that it be a debt exclusion override and not a general override.
Thank you, Fran. Sir, would you like to, please?
Thank you.
Name and address for the record.
My name's David Lynn, I live at thirty-nine Glendale Street.
Thank you.
I don't really have a lot of new things to add to what other people have said, so I came up to just, just to voice my support for putting it on the ballot. One of the things that I know is that there's, there's really no one in town that wants to see schools losing money. So I would support putting it on the ballot so that people can decide for themselves whether or not they wanna support it with their money. Everyone has their own budget concerns to think about, and people can think about for a longer period of time if it's on the ballot. Also, I'm a teacher myself, I teach high school science. And I know we have a new high school coming, being built, and it'll be open soon in town. And we wanna think about whether or not our students, when they get to high school, will be prepared for all of the things that the new building will offer them. My son, for example, was in second grade this year, and there were twenty-six students in the class. By the time they came to science in March, teachers seemed to have run out of energy. She's actually the most energetic teacher I've ever met. But she was working with twenty-six second graders for a year. And when it came to science, I think what they did was they put a seed in a cup, and they watched it grow, and they wrote something about it. I'm not familiar with second grade science curriculum, but I do know that in this day and age, when you have a class of twenty-six second graders, you can't effectively teach them, no matter how good of a teacher you are. And we're always talking about improving education. It seems like one of the things that we talk about when we talk about improving education is how to do it with the least amount of money. But I can't think of too many other things in my life or anyone's life that I actually know who make all of their decisions based on how can we do this with the least amount of money. Most people like to think about how the best thing can be done, and then the money is also important, but it's secondary. And I'll close with the idea that I know at least three families just on my street that have sent their kids out of the district because smaller, smaller class sizes. And I know that the private schools in the area that cost people a lot of money. One of the, one of the things, one of their selling points is that they have a student-to-teacher ratio, something like twelve kids per class. And that's one of the things that people look for when they go to spend their own money on education, if they have that money. So I would appreciate if the city council put the initiative on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who I'm gonna actually start wrapping up? Please come forward, like to speak to this issue. Please state your name and address for the record.
David Poppy, I live on Ten Holyoke Street. And it's just a brief thing regarding the issue with seniors. I don't know the exact logistics of it, but my father-in-law, he lived in Connecticut, and they actually had a discount in taxes for seniors. So that when this comes up, it doesn't whap, you know, it's not so, it doesn't hurt the seniors so much. And that's just something to think about. I'm not quite sure how it will work and how much the discount would be, and if that's gonna increase so much for the other people's taxes, that'll be too much. But it's something maybe to think about, so that it's a little more, kinda works for everybody instead of, you know, well, me as, someone like me who has a little boy, who's, you know, gonna go into preschool again, is not benefiting more than this gentleman here who doesn't have any children. But overall, though, if we both can work together, then it benefits the whole town as far as property values and, and whatnot. And also, the other thing is as far as property values, one of the attractions to this town, and it's, if, one thing I'm seeing in this town, which, when I talk to people from out of town, is the reason people come here is we're the only city, proper city. I mean, everyone wants to be Northampton, and Northampton is kind of a draw for this area. East Hampton's the other city, and we're growing like crazy, and it's, people are liking it. But one of the main things is education. There's a lot of families I'm meeting, especially in my neighborhood over on Ten Holyoke. A lot of the older folks are moving to Florida, or some people passing away. And a lot of these people are coming in, and it's a big concern for a lot of people. So it's something we should think about as far as if we wanna get some people coming in, and we want more people paying it. We should think about that. So, anyway, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually gonna allow three more speakers in favor, and then we're gonna wrap it up because we're overlapping on the same issues.
Hi, Emma, I'm Michelle Downer, on Two Alden Street in East Hampton. I wanted to let you know that I agree with everything everyone has said. And my daughter had prepared a small speech, but she has gotten stage fright. So what she wanted to say was, please, stop taking away from our schools and let us keep our teachers.
If she has something written, she can submit it to the council. They'll be glad to take it.
She can scratch it for you, but she wanted me to let you know, that's how she feels.
I appreciate the comments. Thanks for coming up, it was very nice of you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak to the council on this issue? And I know you know the drill.
I have my little speech here on my laptop. Donna Crowe, Thirteen Holyoke Street, and a school committee member. I wanna take a minute to talk about some, a little bit differently, some of the issues districts face in creating a school budget each year for a public educational standpoint and for your benefit as well. Education today is not the same as it was twenty-five years ago, as I'm sure you can imagine. When we attended school, technology was not a consideration, let alone a need for computers in our school. No child left behind, Title I and other federal mandates did not exist. Both federal mandates that, or these are federal mandates that cost our district resources and are not fully funded. Second, there are school choice and charter school mandates that did not exist twenty-five years ago and cost our district quite a bit of money. But I do wanna say, as a side note, in defense of those charter and school choice families, that they are doing what they feel is the best for their child's education. Unfortunately, what we find our district paying for our school are choice-out students who have never experienced East Hampton public schools. They move here to take advantage of lower property taxes with every intention of choicing out their child without ever having experienced East Hampton to a district that appears to have, on the surface, a better education, when in fact our programs are just as high-quality as any other district in the Commonwealth. Excuse my nervousness. This is not the intention of school choice. School choice was put in place to allow parents to send their child to another district when their child's needs were not being met or serviced well. We don't find that is the case, since most of our choice-out students have never attended our district. On the subject of charter school, which did not exist twenty-five years ago, it's great that a student has the opportunity to immerse himself in a Chinese education, for example. But if the state is going to make the decision to allow those types of special offshoot schools, then they ought to fund it, especially since the expenses are pulling resources from our programs in East Hampton. We do get some reimbursement for those funds, or those expenses, but the allocation is prorated less each year. Those are also extra expense, or, excuse me, there are also extra expenses associated with special education. Circuit breaker funds are supposed to relieve some of that pressure, but unfortunately, state reimbursement doesn't cover the entire expense. For example, in the past, we had a student that cost this district a hundred fifty thousand dollars for one year for out-ofplacement expenses. This student never attended our district, did not live in East Hampton, but East Hampton paid the bill because the student's parents' last known address was East Hampton. But let me just say that I don't speak against a student's need to get an education. I believe every child should have a quality education to be a contributing member of society. However, if the state, again, is going to make those mandates, they should pay the bill. Those kind of mandates should not be at the responsibility of one town like East Hampton. So due to these factors, please keep in mind that our budget is not only related to enrollment figures, for example. I believe I've heard in the past that our budget is based on enrollment figures, or at least insinuated to that fact. However, that's not the case. There are many other factors that go into our budget. These kind of factors are causing our budget year to be difficult every year. So when you compare each budget every year to past years, please keep this in mind. And I do know, or, you know, also keep in mind that these are not at the control of the school committee, or the superintendent, or even yourselves. They're just mandates passed on by the state and the federal government. So that's just one point of view to keep in mind when you're thinking about budget and how the budget each year changes, or has changed over the number of years. It's not like we used to, to experience in when we attended school. And if, if you're thinking that, if you're making that comparison, you think our budget is too high based on how it was when you're in school, then I urge you to inform yourself on these issues and write your state legislators and senators to express to them the effect that those kind of things have on our budget. Anyway, like our chairman explained, we have a vision, and we want to support a twenty-first education for the benefit of East Hampton's future, and I hope that you support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Given the time, I'll entertain one more person if they wanna come up and speak to the city council on this issue. Please do. Name and address.
I'm Dr. Gabriel Aquino, I live at one oh three Strong Street. I just have a very, very brief statement to kind of say, regarding everything that's been said here. I completely agree with most of it. I just think that the one thing to keep in mind is that we're not asking you specifically to increase the budget, to add this to the budget. We're asking you to allow us to vote on this. And I think that, that is the only thing that we're really asking for, is a vote. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Just before we close the public hearing, I was wondering if the finance director could just give a impact on the, what the override would be. I know there's been dollar figures in the paper, and I certainly have those, and I just wanna make sure that those are being reported correctly.
So I'm not really sure what your specific question is.
In other words, if, if, if the one point four million dollar override were approved, what would be the effect on the tax rate and on the average homeowner in town?
The, the effect on the one point four is exactly a dollar on the tax rate. I believe there are a couple scenarios talked about in the, in the two thousand thirteen budget. We talked about only appropriating for half, so if you left half to be captured in the next year, then it would be obviously fifty cents in the first year. And then in the second year, it would be the dollar plus the additional two and a half percent on the base, again. And I, I think the average, the average home is like two hundred and thirty, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So that's about, is that right? Yeah, so it's about two hundred and thirty thousand a year.
What I'd, what I'd like to say, just to caution everybody, is that the numbers you're gonna hear here, and you're gonna hear throughout this campaign, are, are numbers that are basically our best guess and our best estimate. They are not numbers that are certified by the state, so they're not, not necessarily gospel. I have great confidence in the, in our finance director that they're gonna end up being certified by the state, but at this point, they haven't been. Just wanted to qualify that thing. Councilor Psychowski.
Melissa, I hope, I hope I didn't hear you correctly what you said. If, the override is for one million four hundred thousand dollars. Then you said something about if you factor in it in the second year, two and a half percent. It's not gonna go up, that override is a, is a certain figure. It doesn't go up like two and a half on a tax rate. Is that gonna be, if that's gonna be the tax rate, that's gonna be an additional, additional cost.
Is, is a general fund override, it becomes part of the base?
Thank you. So I mean, so that figure, so that figure, that figure, that base figure is erroneous because in the, in the other years, it'll be two and a half percent on that. Then on the third year, the figure is gonna be higher, plus two and a half, and it's gonna keep going up. And the thing of it is, I don't wanna get into it, I've got my question answered, so I just, I think I'll let it go there.
Point of order. Please state your, point of order.
She's speaking out of turn, if she wants to speak, I'll go to the podium.
Point of order, well taken, you're speaking out of turn. Are there any further questions for the finance director?
No.
Councilor Winnie.
Melissa, the, we just got the first tax bill in for the high school. Is that the first, first tax bill for three, of three?
You won't, you won't see the impact of, you saw a portion of the increase for the tax bill, and last year we paid a one-interest payment for a partial year last year on the high school. The full impact of the high school is gonna be affected in two thousand and thirteen, but that doesn't actually show until they set the tax rate. So it will come out in the, in the January bill due February second.
Do we have a projected, a projection of what that's gonna be on an average house of two hundred and...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty thou, twenty-eight thousand?
I didn't, I didn't bring that. I will say that if I was to guess at the tax...
Hey.
Two twenty-eight, yeah, average. Rate, for next year, it would be over a fourteen percent, I mean fourteen per mil rate, and fourteen point three-five-ish to maybe fourteen fifty is my, my best guess right now, from thirteen to five, and that's without the override. With the override appropriated fifty percent, I'm guessing around fourteen point eight-five. But again, there's a lot of moving parts, and I, it's a guess.
Well, you know, I'm not asking that you, I pin you down on this, but would it be safe to assume that, that the first tax increase we've got on the high school is possibly one-third?
It, the tax rate's gonna go up over a dollar from last year just because of the, just because, the difference between two and a half, you know, it goes up every year and the new additional exclusions.
So we're, we're looking at the tax rate from the high school probably tripling?
From that?
From, from, no, from this tax bill.
I think, I didn't...
Probably, just a, just a ballpark figure. Mayor?
I didn't bring, I didn't bring, I didn't separate. Yeah, I know, I know, and I'm sorry.
I don't wanna put you in that position.
Mary Tausnick, I know you've finished your talk.
I know you don't wanna put anything out there.
It's, actually, wait, I do have it, I lied, okay. It was twenty-six on last, and it will be eighty-four on this. Twenty-six cents, or twenty-six cents of last year's, it'll be eighty-four cents on this year's. So I did break it out, I thought I didn't bring that paper, sorry.
And then next year will be the full effect?
That thirteen, that is...
That is the full effect, the eighty-four? Per thousand?
Right. And it will go down as, you know, we start to pay it off in the interest, so that's probably the biggest one.
Mary Tausnick, would you like to clarify some of the things?
No, I don't. Melissa's got it, eighty-three, eighty-four cents is what we, is what we calculated. I think that's what we told you the last time you asked the question. I'm just speaking in favor of putting it on the ballot.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a woman in back here, would you, if you wanna, this is public hearing, if you'd like to come forward and address the city council, please state your name and address, and we'll try to answer your questions, or try to get someone up here.
I'm Anastasia Hasey, thank you, and I'm sorry for speaking out of turn. I'm not used to this forum. I live at fifty-four Cherry Street, and I'm, would love to understand what, I, I'm gonna be discussing this with my senior neighbors, with other neighbors who are either on a fixed income or wanna understand the finances better. I wanna have a good understanding of what it is that I'm asking them to give up. And I guess I was just a little confused, and I was interested in what Mr. Hasey...
My suggestion would be to sit down and inform with the finance director, who could actually bring the assessor in if you want to, and they'll give you a good idea on how proposition two and a half works for the city and carry you through there, so you can have that level of understanding.
Thank you.
Okay. It's a, Melissa? If you, I, I know I was extending a favor there, but I think you are. If you, I, I know I was extending a favor there, but I think you were. Uh, is there anyone else who has a question for, uh, finance director or anybody? Counselor Hagan, you still have the floor?
I guess I, if there's no other public comment, I'd make a motion, we close the public hearing and discuss...
No.
No? Does that, all three items are in public hearing.
Oh, I meant the public hearings, this particular item.
Until there's a motion on the floor, you can always take a question, it's up to the president.
Do you have a head? Counselor Winnie?
Is the, is the superintendent here?
No, superintendent was not available this evening, unfortunately. Um, the finance, what did we call you, Andy? Finance director, finance consultant is here to answer any particular questions, and I've had several conversations with Nancy, so potentially I might be able to answer a question or two you might have had for her, but...
I think you'll do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're in the hot seat. Um, just a few questions for clarifications, and by the way, for, for everybody's knowledge, I work for a school district next door, so I'm very aware of school budgets, and I'm very aware of city budgets. I've been on the city council for 15 years, and of those 15 years, I served well over half of that on finance. So I'm very attuned to the money matters on both sides. Mr. Mayor, um, the six positions that they're talking about eliminating, do you know how they were created?
That, that will certainly be someone else's answer.
All right. Well, all right, here's another one. Um, every time that the school district, correct me if I'm wrong, hires an employee, the benefits come on the city side, correct?
Yeah, the, the report I gave you this evening describes that piece as the, as part of net spending, so part of the total that we get credit for under a formulaic requirement, uh, chapter 70, um, so yes.
Okay. So my question to you is, when we not just hire the six employees back, but the new positions that they're proposing under the override, the city will have to pick up those benefits on the city side.
Well...
So how will that affect the city's side of the budget?
Sure, I mean, um, for a moment, I'll, I'll speak as if the override were approved, and city council said that we could add that 1.4 million dollars into an operating budget. So what would happen is, um, I think Ladonna mentioned how we sort of back into education by giving it a percentage, and so the way that I would handle the decision by the voters to add more money to the base is add the 1.4 million to the 20.3 million that I've simp- I've just described to you this evening. It would be shared on both sides of the ledger because it would be a part of net spending. That 1.4 million would go to education spending, but it may not all be directly available on the school side of the budget, um, because, as, you're correct, if there are 60 or 70 thousand dollars in additional benefit costs, they would be covered by that additional available revenue in the general budget. So we would, we would recalculate the education base of available revenues from 67 percent to whatever the number is if we added 1.4 million, and I'm sorry, it didn't work that. You could do it, you have the numbers in front of you, or I could do it and report back to you in a few minutes. But it would likely add 23, 1.4, probably about 8 percent. So we may go from 67 to 84, or 85, I'm sorry, 74 or 75 percent of the total. And that would be allocated the same way we allocate it now, where we, we essentially provide a, a certain level of funding. The majority of this new funding would definitely, because really the only effect it's going to have would be on the benefit side. Many of the staff positions that are funded by grants in the school department, the grants also pay for the benefits. And so that's something that is, is actually worked through Andy and through the financial staff on this level, and through, um, the personnel department downstairs. We determine how much that can be applied, and there's a journal entry made in order to apply that to the cost of health insurance. That one I could answer. So it really, it would, it, it wouldn't put an undue, I guess the short answer is it wouldn't put an undue burden on the general fund side, that it would help support that side as well.
Now, um, just for clarification, and I'm going to follow up with, with Mr. Root, the 1.4 million dollars will go into the general fund to be allocated through the budgetary process through the mayor, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So the way that it all works is that ultimately you decide how much of that we spend, and where we spend it.
We can only cut.
Certainly, that, that is the truth, but I don't want to speak for what you do in this government, but if you saw a mayor taking a million dollars of that and putting it into some other budget, you could take it out, which is what you should be doing. You know, we're, we, we will make a promise to the voters that if they say yes to this, it's going to go to education. If you all break your prom- uh, this isn't directed, if we collectively as the government of East Hampton break our promise, they ought to throw us out. And so that's really a red herring. I, I don't, I never bought that argument, and I still don't. Because there are lots of checks and balances to make sure that it continues to be spent on education.
Hey?
Peter, I, you may be able to answer more of this...
Want to talk to, who's that?
The mayor.
Please, Mike, Counselor Ziegler, please.
Can I just make one point, just, just as a clarification? The superintendent is at a superintendent's meeting, that's all, I just wanted to be clear. That's why she's not here.
She's not blowing you off.
Counselor Ziegler.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Superintendent Fonsby provided us with some data on the cuts over the last five or six years, and...
The reductions, right, yeah.
Right, with the reductions.
I, I only raised that because there have not been budget cuts to the school department. If you look at it, the budget has gone up, it just hasn't gone up enough to cover the increase in costs that the school department's experienced.
Well, that's actually my, that's my question, and, and I also will say, just as a disclaimer, I'm an administrator and I, a local school district, and I am part of the budget process in that district also, so I have a bit of experience with that, but not the history of Councilwoman Winnie of 15 years, so. Uh, my question is, is going to that, and again, thank you for clarifying, it's not cuts, but the, the reductions in staff. Over the last few years, I'm, I'm looking at these reductions, and this year I'm looking at, um, possibility of six teachers being reduced, and I, I do find it very concerning when you're looking at class size and, and other concerns around related service providers too, uh, for ELL and special education. But I, I guess my question is, with this reduction in, in force, over the last few years, or even this year, as the, uh, chair of the school committee, has there been discussions on, okay, being on, serving on the school committee?
This is, this is the different town.
Right. Has there been discussions around furloughs, or has there been reductions, or have, has anybody given up steps, or how about the, the cost of living, the COLAs?
I, I will, I will let the chairman, if you don't mind, the chairman of the school committee talk to that.
Sure.
Um, most of the reductions in staff have been through attrition and retirement, um, and so there haven't been the kinds of layoffs that it would appear, um, but I am not personally aware of any givebacks, if that's the, if that's a fair way to answer that.
Well, my question, and again, I guess, if I could ask the chairman?
Mr. Gunn, please. This speaks also to, uh, Counselor Winnie's question a little bit too.
As best I can.
Right, just over the last, let's say, three years, um, regarding the association contracts, the cost of living has, you know, has it been a 1 percent, a 3 percent? Has there been any givebacks of that cost of living, or, um, has there been any givebacks on steps or any furlough days? I know a lot of other districts looking at the set amount and understanding where we are in, in the economy, and again, the, the additional burden that it can put on families with, with their, uh, I think it was meager resources and limited resources, and it, just running the, the numbers quickly, with the high school, if it's a $1.84 on a 228,000 house, we're talking about a $425 increase. What has, please enlighten me, because I haven't been involved with the conversation, but what has, have there been conversations with the association, with the school department, with the, uh, school committee on any ways of avoiding these cuts? Avoiding, excuse me, avoiding these reductions of teachers by possible givebacks?
Okay, I, I'm going to try, and I, I apologize that the first thing I need to tell you is that up until this past September, my spouse was a paraprofessional working in the special needs program at Maple School, so I was not allowed, it's a bit unusual to have a member of the school committee who's not allowed to be in the negotiations, but I could tell you what the final outcome there was. This year, um, the conversation is ongoing, and I'm limited as to how much I can share about that conversation. At, what I would say is that the, the steps have remained in place. The dollar amount of increase separate from the steps, um, the previous year, and Andy, make sure that I get this right, the previous year was zero, 2011. Yes?
They took a zero in...
They took a zero in 2011, and we have not yet settled the contract for the upcoming year. So, I, I guess that's as much as I can tell you.
Well, when they took the, the zero in 2011, did that, again, I'm looking at the reductions, did, was that done to offset the reductions? Because when I...
It helped reduce the, the gap, which is the term, reduction or gap. It helped reduce the gap, and therefore it helped preserve program. Some of the program is staffed by people who are paid through grants, some is paid. So the precise, am I able to, is there a precise way of the amount that the zero would have, would have preserved relative to what we would have faced with any, I mean, I, I know that that's, the most recent final number was the zero that was taken, but the steps, the steps remain in effect, but a zero on the cost of living side. Right. Yes?
I have a question for you, before you go. Question, again, it concerns the, uh, six, uh, reduction of force. Any, is there a bumping process where, you know, you might lose a math teacher, but then they become a, something else along down the line? And, uh, to give a true picture of what is actually happening, I haven't, I don't know that.
Right, I think the, if I understand your question correctly, there is, when a reduction is made, uh, a sequence that goes through where someone may remain in the school system as an educator, but may move to a different position based on, um, years of service in the school system.
Okay, uh, the other question is, I just, uh, signed, uh, a large amount of retirements from some, um, well-earned and long-term, um, teachers in this, in this group, and I was wondering if that, those retirements were taken into consideration in your calculations?
Uh, the, yes, and, and one of the ways that we hope to minimize the impact is by finding great young and mid-career professional educators who we would, who, who are compensated at a, at a lower level than a, a long-serving veteran who's just retired.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
One more.
Counselor Winnie, go ahead.
Uh, of the six positions that are being reduced, were any of them grants?
Did we have a grant, one grant on the position? That's all.
You're at the podium, I'm going to ask you to identify yourself.
Sure, Andrew Pocket, the school business consultant, finance director, numbers person. They were, there were two that were grant-funded from two years prior through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, which, uh, was used to help support the education in the district. You could use part for recovery, part for investment, so the recovery part was through the, the ARRA grant.
Okay, so the two positions that are being reduced were grant positions, so they knew, you knew, the school department knew, going into the grant process that...
Technically...
Those positions were either going to be eliminated, or you would have to carry on with the funding of those, because we all know grants don't last forever.
True, but when you look at the definition of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, the recovery portion of it was to hopefully, for the two years, carry us through to an economic turnaround, which that didn't occur, and so we find ourselves in the position that we're in now. So yes, I would, I will grant you your position, but I will also grant our position of, when we're looking at the intent of that grant, add that with the Edge of Jobs grant, another federal thing to try and help us through, and here we are, three years into recovery and reinvestment, that the turnaround has not occurred. Hence the reductions.
Fair, thank you.
Any further questions for either the chairman or the business manager?
We have someone in the audience.
I was wondering if I could talk out of turn.
Counselor Riss, your suggestion?
Public hearing is not closed, it's up to you.
Please come to the podium, though, I...
I'll give my name and address real quick again.
Name and address?
I'm Shelley Gathlin at 39 Glendale Street. And just from this very last back and forth between the council members and the mayor and the finance and all these great folks, there is a big word that's popping out for me, and that's resourcefulness. I can see that steps have been eliminated, we've used grants to do programming, and I think that stands for a lot for our school district. They've done a lot with a little, and we're asking you to give them more so they can do more. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. And then, Counselor Riss, go ahead.
I, I just can't, I was going to wait until we had a motion, but I can't. All of these questions that are directed or being asked, and are being stated today, suggest that we have the authority to raise somebody's, our taxes. We're only charged to put this on the ballot, and I, for one, am concerned that some of us are feeling like it is our job to put before the, not to put it before the voters, because somehow it's our fault if the taxes are raised. I'm very concerned that that's where we're going, and I, I want to make sure that everybody knows, we're only charged to, to put this on the ballot. We're not raising people's taxes, that's your decision. That's all the comment I have.
Hey? Looks like we're rolling up the discussion, any, any further discussion with the counselors? I'll make it a little bit.
Before I make a motion, any other professionals you want, any counselors want to speak to? Counselors, like, or...
You know, when the information that came forward this, this evening, uh, I always thought, after we had a little chat here, it would go, go fly right through, and I was going to vote me affirmative. But the thing of it is, when I found out about the proposition 2 and 1/2 that was kicking in, I think this, this should go back to the school committee, and they should go for a debt exclusion for one or two years and hope that the, uh, the economy will turn around, because with 2 and 1/2 kicking in, it's like a time bomb to the community, and we don't, we don't know how, how to, they're already talking about recession again on the financial channels. I mean, so we're, we're going to, and the thing of it is that Franny got, Franny Root got up, he brought a very good point about the retirees living on, uh, limited income that own property and pay a tax, we have to, we have to consider those people too, and we have to be fair to both sides. I can understand how the parents with their kids are in school, the little kiddies need everything, right? Well, my kids went through the, with the horror years back in the 60s, it was supposed to be the worst thing that ever happened. They did well. They went after their education. And the thing of it is, the thing that, another thing that bothered me here this evening is about teachers can't control 26 kids in class. I forgot how, how many, when I was going to school. We weren't very, any worse, we were maybe worse than the kids that are going to school today. I don't, I got sent to the principal's office an awful lot. And the thing of it is, I don't understand, I didn't hear anybody said, you're flipping them down at principal's office.
Don, I'm going to let you continue the discussion a little bit, but I want to try to keep it germane to the...
No, but I mean, the thing of it is, I think, I think, I, I would like, like to see this go back to the school, to be, to be researched, we have time before November, and, and bring it back to the council as a debt exclusion. I think it'd be fairer to the community.
I'll let you, I know what you're going to say about Counselor Riss, please go ahead.
I just, because my good friend Fran Root brought it up, and because Counselor Sikowski brought it up, our meeting from General Laws, chapter 59, section 21C, Proposition 2 and 1/2 ballot questions. B, debt exclusions. They are only allowed to fund, quote, "specific projects." The exclusion may be used to raise additional funds only for capital purpose, such as the building of a new high school. We are not allowed by state law to debt exclude general operating fund requests. So, we'd like to do that, and it would be a great idea, but, but unfortunately, Fran and Counselor Sikowski, we're not allowed to do it.
Thank you, Danny.
And secondly, with regard to bringing it back to school committee, if I might, I'm sure Counselor Hagan would have said this, we can't delay this past August 1st, I believe. It has to be to Boston, or it won't get approved to get on the ballot, so tonight's the night.
Thank you. That's a bit segue into, uh, wrapping up the discussion. Any more discussion from the city councils? Okay, hearing none, Counselor Hagan, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that the city council, um, shall the city approve the following ballot question? Shall the city of East Hampton be allowed to assess an additional $1,407,456?
Shall the city of East Hampton be allowed to assess an additional $1,407,456 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of increasing the funding of the school department operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012? That would be a yes or a no?
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend approval of the aforementioned ballot question. Are there any further comments on this question? Council Hagan, you can go first.
I just wanted to state that through the meetings, and I know we've, a lot of valuable information has come out from everyone tonight, but I think essentially what, you know, Council Rist touched on a little, what our charge is, is whether or not this should be placed on the ballot. And while I'm a member of a representative democracy, I am a fan of pure democracy. And to me, pure democracy is letting the voters decide. And for that reason, I personally was, would support putting it on the ballot for a number of reasons. One, as I said, I believe it'll be for the voters to decide. I think it's not going to cost the city any additional money. If we can place it on the November ballot, there's no additional cost of having a special election. Also, it's a presidential year, so you get the, you know, a very large turnout of voters. So, I think it'll be a good representative sample of the city, how the city feels. And I can only speak as one counselor, but I've had people speak to me both for the override and against the override, and both sides are very passionate. And I'm not endorsing this question either way. I think it's really up to each individual taxpayer to look it over and decide, you know, what is in your best interest? Is it best interest? Again, I have a whole lot of respect for the schools, but I also understand Mr. Root's concern of some of the senior citizens and some of the people that have talked to me that are not currently working. So, but I really feel that it's up to the voters, and our job is just to place it on the ballot. I will say that it was passed by the subcommittee on a 3-0 vote, the endorsement strictly being to place it on the ballot. And the question that I read, or in the form of a motion, I did have approved by the city attorney as being a fair question, and it would need a majority to pass.
To place it on the ballot.
To place it on the ballot.
Okay. Any further comment on the motion question for us? Council Rist?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment once again that it is our charge to place it on the ballot. We are not raising people's taxes, that's their job. And I am personally agreeing with Council Hagan. Our Prop Two and a Half law allows us only to raise taxes 2.5 percent, and that has not been able to keep up with any of the department's budgets increases each year that are natural, inflation, increases in labor costs, et cetera. So, 2.5 percent is not able to keep it up. What I wanted to make sure that we all recognize is that if we vote against this this evening, we are denying that segment of the population that is passionate in favor of it, the right to vote. We are only supporting those who would vote no. And I think that's a huge mistake, because you deny them democracy. You deny them the right to vote. And this has been proven, given the great, and I want to compliment the school board and the superintendent for the amount of information given to the finance committee. We asked basic questions, what these reductions were, how the programs are being affected. And I'd like to comment that this is a spiraling cause of choice. And the funding mechanism, which Mrs. Crow pointed out, that the state has mandated, which is absurd, choice is sending our students to other schools where they're looking for better programming. If we keep reducing our ability to fund our own programming, more students will go out. The exact cost of this override almost matches dollar per dollar the loss in school choice funds. So, that's a telling statement. We're building a beautiful new building, our high school, and that was voted, which I didn't think would pass, two to one in favor. So, to vote no is to deny those that want to vote yes, the right to vote. So, I urge our, my fellow councilors to at least- I wanted to state also that our school board is elected. They are elected representatives. They have looked at this, they've looked at this carefully, the dollar amount they selected. The school, the finance committee asked them to go back to the drawing board, because we thought maybe it was too much, that it wouldn't pass if it was this high. But they were adamant and passionate, and they looked at it, dollar per dollar, program per program. And they are the elected representatives, they own this override, and it's their job, along with the parents and people in favor of it, to sell it to the difficult part of selling it to the public and to the taxpayers. So, I just wanted to make sure we understood that they are also elected, and they have a very big fiduciary duty to the schools. And I believe they've met it by carefully analyzing what this means. And I wanted the other councilors to know that we did ask them to look at reducing the amount, and they felt pretty passionate that they could not. They needed to try and get this passed. Thank you.
I'll actually speak at this moment. It was actually very hard to see the, hear the testimony tonight, and hear what people had to say. And I'd like to thank you for coming forward. I'd also like to thank those who have emailed me and those who have called me. And I received both pro and con messages concerning this. A very hard decision for me. And I want to make it clear that of everyone I talked to, not one of them, it's not about whether they care about the schools, they care very much about the schools. It became a question of necessity for many of them. And with that said, when I look at the amount, I feel that request is a little overreaching. And for that reason, not frivolous, overreaching. And for that reason, I will not be voting in favor of this tonight. And I hope people understand that this is not something that I expect to polarize the community, but it's a question of necessity. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments they'd like to say to this? Council Sekowski?
One of the things that's bothered me this evening, because I'm glad you people are here supporting it, and you're passionate, because you're all got kids, right? Mine are gone, thank God. But, but the idea of it is, you have to realize, out there in a community, we are a community. Like Franny Root brought up, there's retirees in this community, and with the extra costs that are going on with the new high school, with this, with this, with this override, with Two and a Half kicking in on that override every year, and that Two and a Half, I think, will be in a whole cap that we have. So, that's a bigger figure than we're really factoring in here this evening. And it's really, really bothering me. And the thing of it is, Franny owns the house, I own the house, I'm retired too. The thing of it is, our budgets are very limited, but I mean, we're getting through. But the idea of it is, there's other ones that are in worse shape than us. And what bothered me, if we pinch these people so tight, are we going to force them out of their homes? Or are they going to have to make a choice of not buying food or not buying medication? Because this is some of the problems that we're going to run into. And the idea of it is, I never realized, when I come here this evening, that Proposition Two and a Half was going to affect this. So, I mean, it changed my whole reasoning. I was going to vote in affirmative at the first place. But right now, I'm still waffling which way I'm going with a vote. I'm most likely, I haven't made up my mind yet.
Okay, that's it. Council Winnie?
You people here aren't asking us for more, you're asking the public for more. We're not the ones that are going to make that decision. Council Rist, Council Hagan, all very correct. I have no problem putting this on the ballot. The questions I ask tonight are the questions that are going to have to be answered to the public. I know the answers, I'm just putting them to the test. I pretty much know the answers. I, in a different district, we're struggling with the same thing. We've gone four years without raises, we've gone four years without colas, all of the above. I'm living on a limited income, just like the retired people. I don't know of too many people who can go out and say, I need a raise in this economy, or I need more hours to work in this economy. There isn't. I'm the McKinny-Vento liaison in the community that I'm in. I see homeless kids, parents coming in, losing their houses. The economy stinks. Just putting it out there. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. With that being said, I have no problem putting this out onto the ballot for the individuals to vote on, because that's pure democracy. And I agree with Council Hagan, that's pure democracy. But, I'm just putting it out there that you need to be prepared, that the economy, and the second thing I want to put out there is what Ladonna, Ms. Crow, put out there. I really think that all of you need to sit down and start writing your legislators, because the funding mechanism for cities and towns is so skewed that we are always getting the short end of the deal. There's no question about it. The more we fund our schools, the less money we get from the state, and the less programs that are offered to us. That's just how it works. And it's happening in other communities around us. You've got Hoy Oak, which is getting grants and everything else because of their economic climate. We're not in that situation. We've got North Hampton, who gets a little bit less, but they're always complaining because they get less than Amers. So, it's a big circle. The funding mechanism stinks, and I really think that a lot of your energy should also be focused on your state legislators and your federal legislators. Because Ladonna is absolutely right. I am the McKinny-Vento liaison. McKinny-Vento, all of those fundings, the mandated funding that we have to come up to provide services for these kids are unfunded by the government. But they're all programs that we have to provide for the kids. And I'm sure Counselor Ziegler can probably talk to that a lot more, because he's on the special ed side, which is fully, wholly underfunded for the mandates.
That's it? Any other councilor have any comment on motion? Council Hagan, since your name was me.
Since it was brought up, I will be voting in the affirmative to put this before the voters tonight. And although 1.4 was a number that originally I was a little uncomfortable with, especially because we're talking about some investment beyond just the recovery, I will say that when you're looking at the programs that are available, I've heard things, something about world language and maybe bringing that to the elementary level. If you, if that 1.4 is approved by the voters, I would only ask that they look at any of the, the school committee, look at the investment, and say, where can we actually increase this over time? I have seen that appropriately invested in programs such as ELL or special education can actually decrease your costs over time, if again, you build your capacity moving forward. So, as I said, I will be voting in the affirmative tonight, and I would just hope that it is looking at investment beyond just recovery. I hope that if approved by the voters, that that is done in a manner that will continue to pay off down the line.
I'm going to ask for one more round of comments, and then I'm going to round up and ask for a roll call vote on this. Any other councilors have any further comments they wish to make? Okay? Hearing none? I have a roll call vote, please.
Don Sekowski?
A vote on this motion, Don.
You really want to vote for me, huh? It's a very, it's a very difficult vote. But Ms. Winnie brought up the democratic process, the subset of people. If it was up to me, I'd vote no, but for the democratic process, I'll vote yes, with a big question mark. Because I'm very, very worried about this, especially when they say they can't control kids in class.
You voted yes, Don, we're good with it. Next, please.
Dan Hagan.
Yes.
Joe McCoy.
Yes.
Ogle Evans.
No.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Joy Winnie.
Yes.
Nathan Ziegler.
Yes.
Justin Cott.
No.
Six yeses, two noes, motion passes.
Congratulations to all those this evening. Now, before we leave, before we leave, Council Hagan has a notice you'd like to-
This is something that the clerk gave me in the event that it did pass. This is just an announcement, the staff from the Office of Campaign and Political Finance will be holding a Proposition Two and a Half ballot question seminar on Tuesday, July 24th, at 4:00 p.m. at 50 Payson on the second floor. All people are invited to attend this informal seminar, and what happens, it'll get all your questions answered about what can and what cannot be done in support of a proposition Two and a Half ballot question. So, whether you're for or against the ballot question, I think it would be a very informative seminar to come to, because the state campaign and political finance office will tell what you guys can do or what you can't do.
If you need this data, I'd like to pass it along, it's available at the city clerk's office if you forget it tonight.
Mr. President, before we have a large amount of people leaving, I wanted to tell you that unfortunately I have employment needs, I'm supposed to be someplace at 7:30. My employment requires me to leave. I'd like to thank the council, my colleagues, for their understanding here. I would urge the councilors to vote in favor of the CPA request for $300,000 for Riverside Project. I think it's a wonderful request. But secondly, I'd also like to ask Counselor Ziegler to consider continuing the public hearing on the bicycles. I have a lot of questions, but I know that my colleagues will do what they think is right there. I'd like to be able to discuss that when Counsel Derby is here in August, but if that doesn't happen, okay. I apologize, I must leave. Thank you.
Okay. Because there are members here who may have come for the bicycle one, this is where I said I was going to skip on a little bit. I'm going to go to Counselor Ziegler and ask him to report out on the, so to say, the proposal to update the city ordinance, Chapter Three Bicycle. We are, I believe the plan is tonight is to continue this public hearing on this item, but if there's any members of the public here who came to speak, I'll let Counsel Ziegler talk first.
Before we open the public speak on the Chapter Three Bicycles, I just wanted to, we have received some letters of concern about this, these ordinance changes, and I'd just like to address briefly some of the things that we've been looking at over the last couple of months through the ordinance subcommittee. Some of the areas that we're looking to amend in Chapter Three include simple things like the definition of a bicycle, the restricted use in certain places such as the man-hand trail, use of passenger seats, safety issues around the bicycles, speed, riding on the right-hand side of the road, clinging to other vehicles, and riding in groups. I mean, these are some of the major areas in addition to riding on the sidewalks and carrying different articles. There has been significant discussion on this. I'm sure we'll hear a little bit more of this in public hearing tonight. But many of the areas of safety concerns that have been brought to our attention through emails or letters, I just wanted to say that we have deferred back to the state regulations. So, if we've crossed something out in some of the local ordinances, it's not because we don't feel that it's necessary, we just feel that it's appropriately covered with the state language. And on that, I would like to open up the public comment then.
This is one in public who'd like to come speak to this ordinance. Please step forward. I'll recognize this will be continued later on, so you're welcome to come back and speak in if you wish.
Thank you. My name is Eli Damon, I live at 14 Ward Avenue, and I am, I'm a cycling instructor. I've taught for Safe Roots to School, the League of American Bicycleists, and now I'm teaching in the Cycling Savvy Program for the Florida Bicycle Association. So, it was my original idea to amend the bicycle ordinances, and I've collected all the documents related to it, and you can find them at eli-damon.info/easthampton, including a presentation I gave to the ordinance committee, which I'm very proud of, so if you might want to watch that. Okay. The current, all right, so the problems with the current ordinances, they are, many of them are, many of them are contrary to state law and established principles of bicycle safety. Many of them have vague and confusing language, and there, many of them are also redundant in light of state law. They merely, they merely copy something that is already covered by state law. And so, the, and the committee, the ordinance committee has put, has made, has made recommendations, they're changing the definition of a bicycle, you know, the, changing ordinance related to the traffic on the man-hand, parking, riding on sidewalks, use of hands, equipment, and penalties, and all those changes are good. I totally approve of them. I think, I think this, the recommendation is overall, is very good. There are still some, there are still some problems with the committee's recommendation that I feel compelled to point out, though. Some of the, some of the, some of the ordinances, in, some of the language in the, in the committee's recommendation are still contrary to state law. in the committee's recommendation are still contrary to state law. And so, when, when we, when we drive, we, we expect, we expect, we expect that the traffic regulations to be uniform, we expect them to be the same wherever we go, alright? So we don't have to worry about a different set of rules every time we cross a border. And for that reason, the, the state, for that reason, we've all, as, as citizens, given the, the state legislature, the, the responsibility to, to regulate traffic. And a town cannot decide to make its own traffic regulations that, that are different from, from the state's regulations. So, any, any, any local, any local ordinances that, that, that are contrary to state traffic law are not legally enforceable, which degrades the effectiveness of, of the code as a whole and it also leads to conflict and expense and bad attention when, if somebody tries to enforce an invalid law. Okay, so, one, alright, one ordinance, what, the ordinance that I find most troubling is, is Article 41, which is titled Riding on Right-Hand Side of the Road. And the, the current, the current text says, "Every person operating a bicycle upon a roadway shall ride as near to the right-hand side of the roadway as practicable, exercising due care when passing vehicles or approaching vehicles proceeding in the same direction." And so there are many problems with this. The, the committee has fixed some of them with their recommended text, which is, "Every person operating a bicycle upon a roadway shall ride as near to the right-hand side of the roadway as is safe unless preparing to make a left turn, riding in a lane which is too narrow to share safely, avoiding degraded street surfaces, broken pavement, and sewer grates, avoiding the door zone of parked automobiles, avoiding obstructions such as pedestrians and stopped vehicles, or avoiding debris which could damage the bicycle or degrade handling sand, gravel, glass." Okay. Where was I? Oh, yeah. So, this is, so, this is still contrary to state, to state law. State law gives cyclists the flexibility to choose whatever, whatever position is, is best under, is best under the circumstances and does not, does not try to restrict their position beyond, beyond the rules for, for other drivers. So, the, the ordinance is also, the ordinance is also very vague, right? As, as, as far to the right as practicable or as far to the right as is safe, you know, how, you know, who decides that? How do they, how do they determine that? It's very prone to misinterpretation and inconsistent enforcement, even, even with the new language, which makes it clear what, what the, what the ordinance doesn't apply to, but doesn't make it at all clear what the ordinance does apply to.
Eli, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up in case someone else wants to talk.
Okay, how much time do I have?
I'll allow you a little, little more time, but I'm not going to, you know, I'm not trying to nail it down. I'm trying to think of a way to end your conversation shortly.
Okay, sure.
And we're going to continue the hearing anyway, so you get to refine it, come back if you can.
Okay, sure. So, alright, it also, okay, if it, and it reverses priorities, it, it makes basically safety the exception to the rule rather than the rule itself. And, and giving, giving different drivers different rights and responsibilities leads to, creates an atmosphere of, of resentment and competition rather than a friendly cooperative road atmosphere, which, which I think we should, we should have. The other, the other ordinance that I find troubling, which I'll, I promise to be very quick about this, is the group riding ordinance, which is also contrary to state law. State law allows two abreast riding subordinate to the, to the duty to facilitate overtaking. The, the committee's, the committee's recommendation puts it, makes it, restricts much more than that, the ability to ride two abreast and, and under the, and under the, right, under the, you know, idea that, that it would make it easier to, make it easier to overtake, but it actually, it actually, in many cases, would make it harder to overtake. So, alright, I will, I will stop. I have more to say, but, but I will stop now.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public would like to come forward and speak to us on this issue? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Ralph Sturgeon, 11 Elliott Street, East Hampton. Also a cycling instructor happens to be, but anyway. I'm not quite sure if I'm speaking for or against. I will say, number one, that the ordinances needed to be updated, certainly. Now, my first, the, my, the first point I want to raise is whether we have the authority as a city to put all this stuff in an ordinance when it has, as, as I understand, let's say, the Home Rule Amendment, under, under my understanding of that, we are free to address 317, the man-hand trail, because that has not been addressed by the state legislature. And 347, riding on the sidewalk, we are required by state law to stipulate what are the business districts where sidewalk riding is prohibited. So, that's my point one. I think those two things should be in here and I think nothing else should be. Point two, if you don't take point one, I do have a couple, Eli, I, I won't deal with what Eli just spent on 3-41. The wording, the wording in here is, was basically my wording. I thank the, the ordinance committee for allowing us to give so much input that we were able to give. I mean, I don't, I don't think 341 should be in it, but if it's going to be, that's as good as I could get. Two other points on 3-37, where I believe it's paragraph B, they're talking about no right, left, or U-turns. If, if there's a sign prohibiting that, then I on a bicycle may not make those turns just as I in a motor car cannot make those turns. I would like to add one-way streets because that also pertains. And on the riding in a group, again, Eli covered that quite well, but if we're going to have it, let us change the last couple of words there. Cyclists shall allow overtaking or ride single file to facilitate safe passing, I would say, on a two-lane road. Because there are a lot of narrow roads where it doesn't matter how far I get over, you can't pass me safely. But if I'm on a four-lane road, actually, it's probably to the motorist's benefit if we clump up as bicyclists and you can get around us easily. Because you're probably, given most of the lanes around here, going to have to change lanes to pass anyway. So, that's, that's really the only things I have at the moment. I did have some other things, but then I realized that the draft that I received by email was not the draft that you were looking at tonight. So, some of my other concerns have already been addressed.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public would like to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record, please. I'm sure you've heard that enough.
Kristen Wilmer, 4 Kingsbury Way. And I wanted to start just with a general comment, which is the same as what both of there saying. I believe that it's very much in our interest to facilitate bicycling around here. There are neighboring towns, North Hampton, places where it's more present for bicyclists to be there and it does not interfere with traffic on the whole. On the whole, it reduces congestion. I've heard people argue, you know, bicyclists should stay on the bike path, it's lovely we have a bike path, but as a mode of transportation, trying to facilitate real easy traveling from point A to point B anywhere with a bicycle is totally in our town's interest, I would argue. And related to that, I agree with both comments that have been made. My preference would strongly be in favor of not having this ordinance. I believe that there are a very clear set of laws which apply to all vehicles on the roadways, cars and bicycles and other vehicles, and those are already enforced at the state level. And if we wanted to have a clarifying document for East Hampton, we already have a document put together of those state laws, which could be used to enforce those. So I'm strongly in favor of simply enforcing the laws that already exist. That said, I do definitely, I participated in the subcommittee discussions at one of the meetings and I very much think that this is a great improvement over what was there. There were laws that, you know, we had a less restrictive law about bicycle helmets than the state law. We said that, you know, you could, under 16 in the, or under 12, the state law was under 16. There, there are a number of things like that where this actually was misleading to law enforcement. So a disadvantage of continuing to go with this ordinance is that every time there's any change on the state level, we have to reconvene these meetings and update everything again, which seems to just be a waste of time, frankly. But this is much more consistent with state law, this document, and so I believe that it's a great improvement over what was there before. I would also like to agree with the fact that I don't personally think that the right, riding on the right, that Section 341, riding on as far to the right of the road as is practicable, is a beneficial thing to include in here. As a bicyclist and as a car driver, I experience irritation sometimes when I can't easily get around bicyclists. However, when I'm bicycling, particularly on roads like Cottage Street, where it's lined with roads, with cars on either side, it is much, much safer just on those roads to be able to ride in the center. In general, these, the riding in a group and the riding on the right side of the roadway ordinance sections here have, they have, we've listed a number of exemptions, which give some clarity to why those, you know, what situations might it not be best to ride on the very right-hand side of the road? But I don't think that it's easy in an ordinance to be completely thorough with writing all the exemptions. I think it's better just not to have that law there and confuse everybody. There are situations not listed here where it still just makes sense logically to not facilitate passing if you're, if you're taking up the, you know, trying to take up the right-hand side of the lane and there's a car that thinks that they can maybe pass you and you allow that possibility, then it can actually create more of a hazard than if you just clearly take the lane and make it not very easy to pass. So, that's just a lot of examples like that where I believe that this, probably this ordinance isn't needed. There's a great thorough set of laws at the state level, which do a great job of regulating bicycles as well as cars and other vehicles.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public would like to come forward and speak on this issue? Get a motion. That said, before we do a motion, is there any counselor who would like to make a comment? So that Counsel Ziegler can bring this back. Please come forward one more time, I'll allow you to speak.
Ralph Sturgeon, 11 Elliott Street, again. This may be completely out of order. You've said we have received emails and letters against it. I would request to be at some point allowed to see that, whether it's at the committee meeting again, so that we can discuss and refute. And like I said, you know, tell, tell me no if that's the answer, but I, if I don't ask, the answer's already no.
Some of those may be in confidence. I'm sure the chair, we'll pass that on to the chair and he'll make the decision whether he's going to share them or not.
Thank you.
Hey, I have actually one brief comment. I'll state this, I do have a copy of the state regulations here in front of me. It's actually Chapter 85, Section 11B through Section 11E, for those who want to read it. I'm actually, I'm going to commend the group for actually taking this up. It's clear that our ordinance is a little outdated and needs some work and revision. And what I'll do is, I have a list of questions. This proposal to actually continue the public hearing will allow me to send my questions to the chair and, so that he can offer answers rather than take up time and debate then. Are there any other comments from the councilors? What do you think to say?
No, I was actually going to just propose the motion that without having the chair, Councilman Derby, an avid cyclist himself here to be part of this, I would propose that we move to continue the public hearing to the August 1st meeting.
Second.
We have a motion to continue the public hearing on the proposal to update the City Ordinance, Chapter Three Bicycles to August 1st, 2012. Any further comments on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or objections? Motion passes. I hope you can all attend August 1st. Thank you for coming. The next item, Counselor Hagan, you have the floor.
Right, our last public hearing tonight is a supplemental appropriation for $300,000. I'll read the, do a second reading on the appropriation dated May 7th, 2012. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested, $300,000 to be appropriated from CPA Historic Preservation Fund in the amount of $150,000 and CPA Fund in the amount of $150,000, $150,000 to be appropriated to Riverside Window Project in the amount of $300,000. The amount requested will be for the following purpose, to assist Riverside Industries' effort to replace windows at 1 Cottage Street. This is signed by the mayor and the department head, which in this case is Mr. Harris and is chairman of the CPA. What I will say is, when I make a final motion though, I do want to add a little bit, a little bit of increased language on the purpose to clarify exactly what, what we are appropriating so that there's no question down the road what, what we appropriate the money for. But I'll wait at that point to make it.
At that point, that you write that down?
Yeah, I have it, I already supplied it to the city clerk. With that, as a member of the CPA committee, I was definitely in favor of this. I think it, it, it has a lot of positives, both for historic, I mean, the, obviously our main concern is historic preservation and it's an old building and I think it's going to be great and there's a lot of sub-benefits, both for business, both for aesthetics. And I think I'll let, or at least like, if it's okay with the chair to have members of the public come up and Mr. Harris and maybe first and kind of explain the process and, and where that's.
We have to do so. Before we begin, I'd like to let people here know that I have disclosure of apparent conflict of interest that I have filled out and is rest with the city clerk if people want to see that. My son is actually a, works for Riverside Industries, so I'm required by the attorney's office to actually present that so that I can participate in the discussions and vote. Thank you. Are there any members of the public, want to speak first, Counselor?
Well, no, I just need to make the disclosure too, that my daughter recently has become employed by Riverside, Riverside Industries, so I'm going to be reframing from the discussion and the vote.
Okay. Okay, is that alright?
Can we unplug her?
Okay.
Don't tell her that.
I won't.
Good.
So, thank you. I had a discussion with, at exclamation, I am a direct renter from, so I would, their recommendation was because of the apparent to abstain. With the missing two other councilors, I would like to make a motion to
Continue.
Continue this vote next August so that we have actually, or we could take the vote and lose. It's the option. So, I would recommend voting in this August 1st meeting.
I'll second that. Because I mean, to think of this, what is the requirement?
You need five votes.
Yeah, so I mean, two abstaining and one missing.
We have people here who came to speak for the public hearing. I would like to see them have the opportunity to speak first before we make a motion to continue.
We'll come back.
Okay.
It's up to, you know, I mean.
We'll come back.
Okay.
They're not going away.
I know we're all yelling. This presents an interesting conundrum.
I just want to say, I, I, I didn't know this was going to happen or I would have had this, I would have lobbied harder to have this item come up first.
I would have too, sorry.
The democratic process is good to watch.
Counsel McCoy, have you been advised what to do or no?
Yeah, I was, my, I think the committee recommended that I do not, I do not, I abstained from this vote because of my renting for an apparent conflict of interest. from this vote because of my renting for an apparent conflict of interest.
Have you contacted the attorney's office?
My daughter, my daughter is employed by them.
Counsel, I mean, I mean.
Before I actually entertain the motion, Counsel Harrison.
I would, I would encourage the two counselors that made those comments, as I did to President Cobb, who straightened things out, to maybe go another step further and speak to Ethics Commissioner or somebody before you decide not.
That's what I did.
You're, you're set with that?
I spoke to Ethics Commissioner personally.
Before you even think, before you even think about recusing yourself, because it may not be necessary at all.
So Ethics told you. We had a lawyer who called me back, that was.
Okay. That said, we have a motion on the table to continue this public hearing until the August 1st meeting. Any further comment on that motion? Hearing, seeing none, and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or objections? None?
Make a motion to close the public hearings.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings are closed. I thank everyone for coming tonight, and I apologize for the little misstep. Please notify Counsel Wiss.
Just a place for people to be.
Now that said, we've got some final measures to work through under new business. I'm actually going to start with the, if I can find it, real quick, the warrant, you wanna read this one? The warrant article for the state primary to be approved and signed. I turn it over to Counsel McCoy, as we get these.
We do have a request, kind of, please. Yeah, we do have a request, we're still doing business here, to approve the ballot for the September primary, September 6th, 12th primary, and as city government, we need to sign off on the.
Need to do anything?
Actually, I think we need to wait, because, oh no, this is the primary, never mind, never mind.
I have one comment that I did come for the city situation. Can I make a quick comment?
We've already voted to continue the hearing. Sorry. Hey, go ahead.
Never mind. And so, as, as the city government would need to sign off on this primary ballot as it's listed, and so I would just make a motion to approve the September 6th, 2012 state primary ballot as presented by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve the warrant for the September 6th, 2012 state primary to be approved and signed as presented tonight and in front of us. Are there any further questions on this warrant? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any injections or extensions? All set.
I'd like to make a motion to move the conservation restriction on Falls Creek's two properties to the committee's place.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the conservation restriction of 22 acres of land acquired by the Passama Conservators Trust to property committee for review and study. Any further comments on this motion? Any, none? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's move the property. I believe we have.
Mr. President?
Counsel Williams. Yeah, mayoral appointments.
Motion, yeah, motion to move the three mayoral appointments to appointments subcommittee.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table to move the three mayoral appointments to subcommittee for review. Any further comments on this motion before we move it? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No objections, no extensions. We do have one measure of new business to move to committee, Counselors Ziegler. It's the one for ordinance there, the review, it's the one that came in tonight, it's a request to amend Chapter 10.8, keeping farm animals on residential life. I can give it to you real quick if you can't find it.
Okay, well.
Just present it as I said, just move it to committee.
I'd like to request the ordinance on keeping farm animals on property to be moved to subcommittee, ordinance subcommittee.
Okay, we have on the table a motion to move a request to amend Section 10-H, the keeping of farm animals on residential lots, to subcommittee for review, ordinance subcommittee for review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any injections or extensions? None set? Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting has adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for enduring the pain tonight.
What'd you do to all the people here? Drive them out?
I'm sorry.